Good evening. I would like to call to order our regular monthly meeting of Newport News School Board for Tuesday, May 15th, 2018. On behalf of the school board members and the acting superintendent, I welcome each of you that are here and those watching. Our quorum is present to transact business of the school division. Before we get started, you see an empty chair. Mr. Ely is on his way. He will join us in probably 15 minutes or so. So we are going to start our meeting as usual with the invocation and the pledge to the flag. And here to do those honors are two students from Achievable Dream Academy, Augustine Lees and Itara Garrus. First, Augustine will come forward to deliver the invocation, and then he will be followed by Itara, who will come forward to deliver the pledge. So Augustine, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
Good evening, sir. My name is Augustine Lees. I'm a fourth grade scholar. My favorite things to do are playing football and playing tennis.
Okay.
And today for you guys, I'll be reading a poem called "I Am A Dreamer." "I am a dreamer, the author is unknown. I am a dreamer, it's a fact. Right now my life is on track. My dreams are like seas protected by a brace, 'cause I want to shine in this human race. I shall fly in a shining bright light, I'm gonna be in the perfect sight. I'm still hoping and I want to fight until my dreams will be accomplished to be all right. I stay awake, awake overnight. You wouldn't know how I feel, but it feels oh-so right. Listen to me carefully, you hear, as the time is drawing so very near. Our dreams to be real, so very, very true. We must get them out for the world to view."
All right. Augustine, that was absolutely phenomenal. You say you're going to be a football player and tennis player, maybe a newscaster as well. So come on up, Itara.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Itara Garrus. I'm a fifth grade scholar at Achievable Dream Academy. My favorite things to do are jump rope, dance, and music. Today I'm going to be doing the pledge for everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just overwhelmed with those two young students that we have here. And again, supporting Augustine and Itara are their family members and their school family. Would you please stand to be recognized? The board really appreciates the encouragement that you have given your students, and we thank you for bringing them here to the meeting tonight. Again, I'm going to give you another round of applause. You both came to the microphone like y'all have done that like every day. That was very impressive. We're going to continue with our agenda. I guess is this right time for board recognitions?
Absolutely.
And do we have some?
We do. We have several recognitions. We're going to recognize for the first time in our history, three schools that will go on to the World Championships, as I like to call them, for Odyssey of the Mind. And we also have an outstanding staff member at the state level, so we definitely recognize them. Ms. Price, if you'll help us.
I have the pleasure of presenting this month's honorees. Our first honorees this evening are Odyssey of the Mind champions. Odyssey of Mind is a competition that promotes creativity by challenging teams to solve problems. Participating students select a problem, create a solution, and then bring their solution to competition. The teams spend months working together to devise their solution. During competition, they have just a few minutes to present their performance. Participants also have to solve a spontaneous problem on the day of competition. By working together, these students learn the value of teamwork, the appreciation and understanding of others, and that a group is a more powerful thinking force than an individual. Tonight, we're recognizing three student teams who earned top honors at the Odyssey of the Mind State Competition last month. The teams will compete in the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals Tournament at Iowa State University later this month. This is the first time ever that Newport News has had three teams participating in the World Finals, so let's give all of them a round of applause. Teams from Achievable Dream Academy and Woodside High School won first place in their respective divisions. Please join us in congratulating the team from Achievable Dream Academy. Please welcome Amir Davis. Amir, come on up. Jada Morris. Brianna Purcell. And Tatum Rollins. Now, this is significant because this is the first time a team from Achievable Dream Academy has earned a place in state competition. So we are very proud of these young ladies and young gentlemen. Now, to join them, a Woodside High School team also earned first place. Please help us congratulate Catherine Taylor Denny. And Thomas Sarsik? And if you're a regular attendee or watcher of our board meetings, four members of this team were in this place last year this time because they also advanced to World Finals. Catherine, Amaya, Margaret, and Thomas went to World Finals last year as well. Both of these teams participated in a problem called "A Stellar Hangout." The teams were challenged to create a comedic performance centered on a science fiction hangout where different types of creatures from across the galaxy stop to eat, refuel, and relax. Kind of sounds like Deep Space Nine if y'all are as old as I am. Okay. The teams were required to create original creatures and foods and search for space treasure. A worker character, entertainment, and a futuristic map at the hangout had to be included in the performance. So again, congratulations. We also had a Warwick team advance to World Finals. The Warwick team participated in the Classics mockumentary Seriously problem and earned the Renata Fusca Creativity Award, which advances them to the World Finals as well. And they also earned third place in their division. To accept the award on behalf of the team, please welcome Kelsey Lee Starks. So Kelsey's representing her other team members, which include Ayana Griffin, Hannah Obershaw, Noah Pazmino, Zawadi Stiff, Sahara Swinton Kurtley, and Adrian White Jr. So let's congratulate all of them in their absence as well. So Kelsey's team from Warwick selected a literary classic and presented different characters in a humorous documentary-style performance with additional denied, exaggerated, and disputed details. In this problem, the characters don't always agree as they recount the classic story where they appeared. Their skit had to include interviews, behind-the-scenes clips, and voice-overs that could take the audience through the story and present the events as they really took place. The members of the teams before you are now preparing themselves for the World Finals, and we wish them well. So again, on behalf of Newport News Public Schools, congratulations. Thank you all for coming. So joining them this evening are some of their family members, parents, and siblings. Would you please stand to be recognized as well? I'd also like to acknowledge their coaches. Would you please stand? Angie Moore and Charlotte Bordino, Achievable Dream. We have Woodside coach Natalie King and Warwick coach Evelyn Bumgardner and Jeffrey Mullin. Is that correct? Miller, excuse me, Jeffrey Miller. Thank you. We also have their administrators here supporting them tonight. Achievable Dream principal Tara Chalmers-Harris. Woodside Assistant Principal Operations Carl Williams. And our Warwick Administrator Jason Holler. Thank you for coming. Unless we forget our famous Odyssey of the Mind Coordinator/Organizer Dr. Kim Beckertite, Supervisor at Gifted Services. So we go from tops in the state and now in the world to another honoree who is also tops in the state in her field. Our school nutrition administrators are responsible for all aspects of food service operations, including budgeting, staffing, training, and marketing. Their important roles, especially in Newport News, where over 70% of our students eat breakfast every day and nearly 55% of our students eat lunch at school. Each year, the State Nutrition Association selects a child nutrition leader as its Administrator of the Year. This year, for all of her leadership efforts and her tireless work, Debbie Pascal, Supervisor of Child Nutrition and Wellness, was selected for the statewide honor. Please join me in congratulating the School Nutrition Association Virginia, Virginia Administrator of the Year Debbie Pascal. She has to stay just for a few minutes. The criteria for this award is stringent. The awardee must have demonstrated successful leadership in numerous areas. Ms. Pascal has far exceeded this criteria. She has led the way for the first-ever Child Nutrition Services Apprenticeship Program, working collaboratively with the Human Resources Department. Ms. Pascal helped develop the curriculum for the program, and she serves as an instructor and a mentor for the employees. The apprentices know that she is always available to assist and support them throughout the two-year program. She also works diligently with Human Resources to hire employees. She supported the first Support Staff Job Fair, where 60 employees were hired on the spot. She sifts through applications, conducts interviews, and presents a half-day orientation for new employees. She also oversees payroll and grant applications. With this work ethic, we can certainly see why Ms. Pascal was selected for this honor. She'll be recognized by the Virginia Association, and she'll be in the running for the regional award. So we congratulate you, and we wish you much success as you move on. And joining her this evening are members of the Child Nutrition Department team, including Executive Director Kathy Alexander. So would her colleagues please stand and be recognized? Again, congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. This is a very well-deserved honor. This concludes our recognition. So at this time, we'll take about a five-minute break, so our honorees and their guests may leave if they choose to do so. And during this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about five minutes.
Breakfast can be the most important meal of the day. This phrase rang true for three elementary schools whose families started the day on the right foot. The family and community engagement team organized family breakfasts at Epps, Heidenwood, and Newsome Park Elementary Schools to build lasting relationships between educators at school and families at home. 347 family members and their students made time to attend the three morning events. Over a delicious meal from Chick-fil-A, parents and grandparents had extra time to spend with their students before the school day began. Acting Superintendent Brian Nichols attended each breakfast to speak with parents and answer questions about our school system. He was also invited to be the main speaker, encouraging students to work hard now so they can achieve their dreams later in life. He thanked the families for attending and for all the work they do at home, preparing their students for academic success. Parents and children were encouraged to express their love for each other by sharing why they are proud of each other. Through local donations, the experiences were free for all families, with many expressing how the morning events helped them feel more informed, engaged, and involved in their school communities. Families matter in Newport News Public Schools, and the partnership between home and school is the bridge towards lasting success. Sport has the power to change the world. Nelson Mandela witnessed this when he sought to free a country from racial division. Student leaders in Newport News Public Schools borrowed a page from history, using the game of kickball to unify students and staff against the negativity of violence. During National Youth Violence Prevention Week in March, citywide Student Council Association members organized the first annual Kickin' It to Violence Kickball Tournament. Held at Todd Stadium on a Saturday afternoon, all six Newport News high schools participated by organizing student and faculty teams. An administration team from Central Office was also organized, for a total of 13 kicking teams. During the games, students read statistics, quotes, and poems over the P.A. system about the impact of violence in our community. On the students' field, Woodside's team worked their way through the bracket to win top honors, and Menchville's faculty was the winner among educators. To crown a grand champion, these two teams squared off for one last game, where Woodside's youthful energy beat out the strategic minds of Menchville's staff. With a goal to promote student well-being and a positive school culture across our school system, the citywide SCA unified students and staff to stand together against violence and negativity. During National Teacher Appreciation Week, dedicated educators were recognized for their hard work and long hours of commitment. And this year, teachers all across Virginia receive a thank-you note featuring the original artwork of a student right here in Newport News. These notes, handed out by the tens of thousands, are part of Virginia Lottery's Thank a Teacher statewide campaign, in partnership with the Virginia PTA and the Virginia Tourism Corporation. To select the artwork that would adorn this year's notes, the Virginia Lottery held a statewide art contest. Out of the nearly 1,000 entries, Kiln Creek Elementary's second grader Sahasra Fischwanathan was named as one of only three winners in a special surprise ceremony at school. Her artwork, featuring a teacher superhero flying with a group of eager pupils, not only won her a $150 gift card, but also benefited Kiln Creek's art department with a $1,000 check. In front of her proud parents and classmates, Sahasra was pleasantly surprised to win her own personal lottery for contributing her artistic talents to so many teacher thank
We welcome you back and hope that you enjoy the school board spotlight. During our meeting, at this time, during our meeting, we provide a time for the public to address the board. They are scheduled at the early part of the meeting and then again near the end of the meeting. And the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns, or we'll get back to you at a later time. So we do have some cards, and I'll give you just a few little... Comply with our time limit, you have three minutes. You walk up to the front, and you'll see the green light comes on. You'll begin. The yellow light signals you have 30 seconds, and the red light indicates that your time is up, and we ask that you conclude your comments during that time. So that being said, we do have some cards tonight. And first, we have one of my favorite friends, Ms. Jamie Bazemore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. To all of you, I want to congratulate you on your reelections. Mr. Ashby, I hope that you will continue to advocate for the children, attend the town hall meetings, and continue as an educator for the sake of our children. Defeat does not define you. Hopefully, we will continue to work together. Thank you for all of your many years of service. Mr. Nichols, I reiterate, you have shown us what a superintendent should be. When we started the process of fighting for Huntington, you stopped and listened. You saw passion and loyalty and sincerity when it comes to a cause for the children at Huntington. Don't let this be a block in your pursuit of being the best that you can be, and continue to work for the students in our Newport News school system. Mr. Stodgill, thanks for your support of the Huntington Cause. We wish you the best. We pray for your health and prosperity. Thank you for serving for the children. Ms. Ramirez, I wish you much success as you graduate and enter this mad world. It's gonna be all right. Mr. Ely, we need you just where you are. You have not lost a race. You have won the opportunity to serve our youth in the best place you can be. We look forward to continuing to work with you on the Huntington issue. You'll keep hearing that word Huntington, right? I do find that you all didn't look in the backyard, like I was telling you to do, to find the best person for the position. But we are ready to get down to work with the candidate you selected and to make Huntington happen. To all of you, the southeast community is dependent on you to continue the process of getting Huntington funded. Getting it funded by the city. Promise that we will be in the CIP for November and that we are in the first year of requests for funding. Promise us that you will not allow the city to dictate the use of your property. There's no school, there's no recreation center, there's no workforce development center, and we all know their definition of a tech center. Does it? Remember, Huntington, we'll all work together, and we look forward to working with the new superintendent. Thank you.
Next up, we have Robert Lincoln.
Good evening, members of the school board. A few months ago, I spoke to the school board and introduced you to the game of poleball and asked you to make the game a part of the intramural program and the physical education classes of the Newport News schools. Today, I want to tell you about the lower cost and greater benefits associated with the poleball compared with other sports. First, let's look at cost. Recently, on April 18th, 2018, an article appeared on page one of the sports section of the Virginia Pilot. The article said that there were 1,000 young lacrosse players from Southampton Roads High Schools who are trying to get the game of lacrosse recognized as a varsity sport in the high schools. One thing such recognition would probably do is get the schools to absorb the costs associated with the sport. And this is the article that appears. It's a full-page article about 1,000 players wanting to make lacrosse a varsity sport in the Southampton Roads High Schools. So I want to compare for you the cost of 1,000 players to play poleball compared to the cost of 1,000 players to play lacrosse. I prepared a cost comparison, which I will leave with you. It shows that to play lacrosse safely, you need $552 worth of equipment for each player. This does not include the cost of shoes, as we will assume the players will buy their own shoes. Now, to play poleball, there is no equipment needed. All that is needed is a soccer ball, which costs $8 at Walmart, and the other equipment I got from Amazon and Dick's Sporting Goods, the cost of the lacrosse equipment. So for 1,000 players to play lacrosse, the cost would be 1,000 times 552. So, for 1,000 players to play lacrosse, the cost would be 1,000 times 552, or $552,000. And to play poleball, the cost would be $8,000, and it would be one ball for 1,000 players. A similar cost comparison can be made with football and field hockey. The benefits over lacrosse, football, and field hockey are fewer injuries and the players using more skills. All players of poleball use the skills of throwing the ball, catching it, kicking it off the ground, or out of his or her hands, running with the ball and running to catch other players. So, you know, if you talk about playing catch with your kids instead of playing with a baseball, softball, or a football, you throw, play with a lacrosse ball. You can play touch football with a lacrosse ball, I mean, not a lacrosse ball, I'm sorry, just take that, with a soccer ball. So, okay. I'm asking the board to consider the benefits of the game for the children and athletic programs of all the elementary, middle schools, and high schools in Newport News. Then, the board can recommend that the game be introduced to the students through the physical education classes and the intramural programs. Two balls for a school would cost $16 and in the whole school, we could be playing ball. I'll be happy to assist the schools in introducing the game to their students. Thank you for your consideration.
And next, we have Mr. Reverend James Brown.
Good evening. I want to echo everything that Ms. Basemore has said this evening, but I would like to say over these last five or six months, working with this board, I've gotten to learn most of you. And I realize that you are people with heart and you are compassionate and sympathetic towards our cause, that cause is Huntington Middle School. For one reason, because we need the school in the district. Another reason is because the school stands for such powerful influence on our community. It would be wonderful if the school could be built back and had trades in it, various skills that young people could acquire, because everybody's not going to school to be a lawyer, doctor, and some of these other jobs, technician and this and that and other. And schools should prepare kids, prepare young people to earn a living. When they come out of school, they should be set with the skills they need to be a decent citizen, have and respect, and able to earn decent wage so they can continue with their families. And everybody's not gonna go to college for that. I went a couple of years, dropped out, and started my own masonry business and worked it for 40 years, and I hired people like me who didn't go to college, who end up buying homes, end up moving from Ridley Circle to Farmington. So you don't need a college degree to elevate yourself from where you start out. All you need is the heart and the skill, somebody teaching you and giving you the talent, or you have the talent, but the skills is what we need. So, let's build the school. Let's work on getting that money in place. As I said to the city council, I don't care what else they add to it, but the school is primary, is first. If you don't do anything else, the school needs to be built 21st century with skills, trades, and technology in that school, where our young people can see a future and not look out and look around and see devastation everywhere. Don't want, don't understand how they gonna make it. A hungry man would do anything to eat. A student without an education would do anything to survive. It's better to educate than to incarcerate. Thank you for your time.
And next, we have Ms. Uganda Sample Jones.
Good evening. So, thank you so much for listening to me this evening. As most of you know, I am the heritage high school PTSA president and I am the community liaison for the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. So I'm here as such, I am duly selected, to speak for those in which I serve. Our school system and community needs a school superintendent that has tirelessly worked hand to heart with our children and families in our communities, that understands service and answers phone calls and emails of anyone who contacts them, who has a history and is invested in our schools, has walked the numbered streets downtown beside the families of those who have been affected by death and violence in our communities, who has brought Newport News Public Schools into the HUD-CNI planning process to transform Ridley Circle, which has been attempted and never successful, who has kept communication open over concerns with Huntington Middle School, as you heard this evening, and who has dedicated himself and showed up to meetings even when our own board members did not. I have worked alongside this person and he has completed all these tasks that I brought forth to you today. The person is Brian Nichols. Although he will remain in Newport News Public Schools as our chief academic officer in that position, he will not have the unfiltered decision-making authority to execute action plans and goals that he has sat down with grassroots members in our community to work out after he's cried with us and our children after they were murdered. It's not fair to the families you serve to take this type of momentum and progress away. A doctorate is important, but should not be the deciding factor in who is chosen to lead. The person, the people's voice, the true voice of the people, was not considered in this process. I want to thank you for listening to me. We are, however, willing and excited to work with the new superintendent, but I just want to let you know that this is how we feel. This is how members in our community feel. The residents that I serve and work with every day, the children, have came to me and said, "Where's Mr. Nichols gonna be?" It's not fair. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to our, the next agenda item, and we're to our consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have item number 3.01, the minutes from our public meeting dated March 20, 2018. 3.02, the minutes from the regular session, March 27, 2018. 3.03, minutes from our regular session, April 17, 2018. The 3.04, the financial reports, revenues and expenses, April 2018. Child Nutrition Services, also April 2018. And then, but not least, we have the personnel report, 3.05. Is there a motion for approval?
Still not.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the first and second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Simpson, please call a row.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Ms. Dealey?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna move to the agenda to our action item number four. First up, 4.01, we have personnel actions.
No personnel actions tonight.
There being none, we'll move on to item 4.02, proposed rights and responsibilities handbook revisions.
This is a report that you saw last month that the youth development team brought forward to you, so it's before you tonight for questions and action.
You recalled the report last week. We have a motion for approval.
This to approve.
We heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion and a second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Simpson, please call a row.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Ms. Dealey?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. And now, we'll move on to report and information. First up, item 5.01, proposed social studies textbook adoption, grade 6 to 12, and Ms. Nancy Swed will lead us through that.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, members of the board. I come before you tonight to share with you news from the curriculum and development department, particularly with the school textbook adoption in our high school and middle school social studies core classes. So, I think you're pretty familiar with our process because we typically have this kind of report every year. We share the same kind of timeline each time. We start in January, when the state gives us approved list of publishers to examine, and we review for a certain period of time. We have public review here in the hallway and also available at our schools, and then we convene committees together. This year, our committee included teachers, three special ed teachers, one parent, one administrator, and three of our colleagues from the Department of Technology. So all of those people come together and work this textbook process in that time period. What, here you have our main requirements of what we're looking for in a textbook. We know, of course, that we want the textbook to serve the standards put forth through the State Department, and in Newport News, equally and vitally important is that it serves the college career and citizen-ready skills. So we look for books that serve both of those purposes before we entertain anything else. Beyond that, we have a pretty rigorous rubric and evaluation system, and these are some of the things that we look for in that rubric, in the hands of the committee, with the textbooks, and then also with vendor presentations, once we get down to a shortlist, with vendor presentations and times, and time dedicated for Q and A. You see, as I've said, obviously, we have to make sure we serve the standards and the college career and citizen-ready skills. We also are looking for an organization and an ease of use, both for the teacher and the student. And we want there to be assessments available. We want there to be lots of support for our teachers who are teaching and delivering the instruction, and we want rich digital resources for all of us, and we want best practices, especially in the content area of social studies. An example of a best practice in social studies would be document-based questions and the reliance on primary sources. So those are the kinds of things that we look for when we are evaluating our textbooks. So now, I'd like to bring you and propose to you the textbooks that we would like to adopt. They represent four different publishers, and in duplication sometimes, but again, it wasn't a commitment to a single publisher working off the state-approved list. In our middle school, you see that sixth grade, we're going for a narrative style of history, and that is called US History. And you see the American History book there. I've just captured a quick picture of it for you. And then in seventh grade, we're picking up US History and going further into the historical timeline, all the way up to present. And then our eighth grade students, of course, are studying civics and economics, and you can see the textbook that we have selected, that the committee has selected for your approval. Moving on to high school, you see that we have a World Geography, a World History I, and a World History II textbook that have been approved, all three of these sources approved by us, yet to be approved by you. All three of these sources come with rich online packs and both a textbook that students will have access to in the classroom and at home, and digital resources, both for teacher and student. Continuing with high school, we have two Virginia and US History books that we have selected. One is entitled American History and one is entitled Virginia and United States History. The Virginia and United States History book has even richer digital resources, and we felt particularly that that would be a very good resource for our schools that have a one-to-one initiative in their high schools, Dembean Heritage. And then we have, of course, our American Government class for our American Government class typically taught in 12th grade. Just as a reminder of our rationale for the books that we have selected, we go for curriculum support of the standards and the college career and citizen-ready skills. We also look for an appropriate level of rigor that the students can be supported with these resources to actually achieve the intent of the standards. We want students always practicing critical thinking as they explore history and geography, rich digital resources, can't say it enough, but that's really very necessary today, and a nice blend of assessment options that a teacher could rely upon. Our next steps, obviously, would be for you to grant us approval of these books in June. We would then be able to order the books in June for delivery in August prior to our students arriving. During that time, we kick off a lot of development with our teachers as they review the resources, and we rely on our committee members for that as well. And then we will always refine, refine, and revise our curriculum to make sure it's a match with the textbooks and the resources that we have in front of them, and then throughout the year, always monitoring the implementation and the use of these resources. And that's what I have for you tonight.
I have a question. Do you think them getting the books in August will be enough time for the teachers to get acclimated with the curriculum to teach the students for the upcoming year?
Yes, absolutely, because really what it is, is we develop the curriculum. The textbook is not the curriculum by itself. The textbook supports that curriculum. So the teachers already have, even though we're doing some revisions, the text, the teachers already have access to the curriculum, and what they will then have to learn is just the introduction of the new materials. But everything will be paired to them, meaning the resources will be matched, like when you're teaching this skill, be sure to use this map or look at these activities. All of that will be taken care of for them.
Perfect, thank you.
And many of them have seen the books already since they're in their schools for review.
Oh, that's good.
A little bit different than actually using it, but yes, I think they're very prepared.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Simons?
Thank you very much for your report. And are these, the high school textbooks, compatible with the International Baccalaureate, the IB curriculum, or do they get like different?
Last year, we actually adopted and proposed books for IB in particular, because there is a distinction. There is absolutely an overlap of standards, the Virginia standards, but the IB ramps it up beyond that, and so that, they chose books independently last year. And so, last year, when I brought textbooks before you, Social Studies elective, IB and AP were included in that.
Okay. And my other question is, when you all reviewed these textbooks for high school, did you hear publishers talking about preparing kids for the revised College Board, new SAT with like more primary research and primary documents and things like that?
We, everybody, all of the researchers or all of the publishers were very, very attuned to document-based questions and primary resources, absolutely. I don't know that any of them spoke directly to College Board or SAT, but they were so focused on the standards and how they could deliver the standards with those resources.
Okay, 'cause that's definitely a trend, because, you know, our graduates need to be able to get on the job and read a manual that may be translated.
Absolutely.
And, you know. And I also just wanted to point out, our students do learn American Government in 12th grade, is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
And it's a pretty full-on course.
Yes.
So, these kids really do learn about our government system and citizenship.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
That's great, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
I just, I just want, one of the slides, we went back to just emphasize rigor and critical thinking, which I think was excellent. Yes, that slide right there. But it just really covers the importance of rigor, critical thinking, and higher-level thinking skills. So these concepts, of course, are brought out in the book and as children are reading it. So I just applaud and want to compliment and just bring attention to that, because it is truly very, very important that our children critically think, that use their cognitive thinking skills and metacognitive thinking skills, all that skill set in there is just important, so I'm so glad that that's there. Now, a different type of question. I've asked this before. Will there be a day where textbooks are not really used that much?
If our publishers will partner in that endeavor, we would be there. What is happening right now with publishers is they bundle them together. So we don't, we cannot really, we don't often have access to online resources without the physical textbook. They're bundled together. And in schools where we have a one-to-one, we can, we can go after the online resources and the book sits on the shelf, but in all of our other places, the students are really relying on both.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. I guess my last question is, I'm sure in the books that... I guess my last question is, I'm sure in the books that there is a lot of, I guess the best word to use is diversity?
Yes, yes. Before arriving on the state-approved list, which is what we work from, they go through a biased analysis and that kind of thing from the state. We rely on the state to take care of that for us.
Good, thank you so very much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
No one else. Thank you for the report.
Absolutely, thank you.
So we'll move on. Our next F, item number five point oh two, 2018, 2019 federal funding application. Keith Urban, you'll come on.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing tonight? I have the pleasure of presenting to you our annual federal funding plan for the 2018, 2019 school year, which encompasses actually four grants. Title one, two, three, and a new one from last year, Title Four. So when you look at federal programs, we basically use the money to spend in two primary areas, the areas of employee expertise and intervention. The employee expertise is not solely for teachers, but we look at it for classroom teachers, building administrators, as well as central office personnel. We also look at having teacher coaches and mentoring for our teachers while they're in school, working with them, modeling different lessons, and as well as serving as a mentor to them in their first years. And the family and community engagement piece, where you're able to attend a lot of the family and community engagement events that we have, as well as working with our families in many different areas, being at home, school-based events. All of that is funded through the employee expertise with eight family engagement specialists. In intervention, we look at it in three ways. We look at it as a before-school age with our preschool first step program, where we're able to educate 1,350 students a year prior to entering kindergarten in a full-day, rich, rigorous curriculum that develops them socially, emotionally, as well as instructionally. Then, once students arrive at school, we have a school day intervention program where students are showing they need some additional assistance with reading and math from not understanding it fully in Tier One instructions. So we provide a extra time with our coaches and specialists to provide more rigorous instruction with them there. And then as well as after-school and even into the summer with our after-school programs and the Spark program. So we always like to support the district initiatives that are in Newport News Public Schools with our federal funds. A lot of you have attended the STEM design challenges. Federal programs provides all of the transportation for the students from the schools to come to Newsome Park quarterly to participate in those design challenges. In Project Stand or Stand for NMPS Youth Development, we've been able to provide money for professional development for restorative practices. A presentation you heard of earlier this year, we're able to provide money to provide professional development for eight middle schools to provide lead teachers to be able to train other teachers in this initiative. And then with the curriculum, we're always looking to help our teachers become smarter. So we do that through our coaches and our specialists and just through the professional development that's outlined in our rigorous curriculum that we have. And everything we do is in support of the district initiative of preparing students to become college, career, and citizen-ready. So the first grant is Title One Part A. This is the largest of the four grants. This grant services pre-K through fifth-grade students. It's roughly nine point five, nine, right about nine point six million dollars. We concentrate on early childhood education, which about half, maybe about four point seven million dollars of this grant goes to the Early Childhood Education Initiative. The intervention through the specialists and the teachers that we're hiring in this, through this grant, have family engagement specialists and the professional development. The second grant is Title Two Part A, which is concentrated on involve improving teacher quality. We have about 11 positions that are funded through this grant, coaches and specialists. And then another percentage of the grant goes to professional development of our teachers. And it's basic primarily in the areas of math and reading. Title Three is the language instruction for LEP and immigrant students. We have teacher training for ESL-specific strategies with our teachers. We have a family engagement coach specifically assigned just to our families of limited English proficiency to be able to assist them with transitioning into school. We also have software that assists in analyzing data, enhancing instruction, and identifying specific cultural considerations for the students and their families. The final grant, which is a new one, is Title Four Part A. It's three basic areas, safe and healthy students, technology integration, and a well-rounded education. So you can spend the money in any one of those three areas. This year, we did, as we talked about, the restorative practices, something that'll be coming that has not come yet. But it's Live Well Clubs that will be established at elementary, middle, and high schools, similar to like the Wellness Initiative we have for employees. We'll now have that Wellness Initiative for students as well. It's, it's really going to be a big event coming up, and it's on the forefront. It hasn't happened yet, but it's in the works. When you look at all these grants combined totally, we basically have about 147 employees that are funded through this application. They range from administrators to support personnel to ESL teachers and family engagement specialists. Our next steps are you all to approve this June 2018. And then we would finalize the applications and submit them to the VDOE on July, by July the first. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Oh, Ms. Simons?
So what is the funding that Betsy DeVos is threatening? Is it Title One?
Title Two is one that's constantly being threatened to take, be taken away from states in general. And if that was to happen, that would, that would cost us about 11 positions in Newport News, our coaches and specialists. So it's about 1.2 million. The grant was actually cut last year down from 1.3 to 1.1. So that's the grant that you keep hearing about being threatened to take away.
Okay.
The other grant that you don't see in this presentation, because it runs differently, is 21st Century Grants. We have eight, I think, 21st Century Schools, elementary and middle, that we run after-school Saturday programs with. That's another one that was under attack this year, but we're holding with that as well. So those are, those are the two that you hear about federally. So as you talk to your legislators and you push that forward, that's something we want to definitely go against. Because it goes against getting people smarter and spending, kids having more time after school.
Okay. And then the other one, so the Title Four Part A, did you say that was a new grant?
It was just awarded to all districts last year. Grant was finalized. We received the funding around November, and then we had to finalize the application. So about the, about the first, end of the first quarter. It's a recurring grant. We have two years to spend the funds of the grant, similar to Title Two. It's supposed to get level funding year after year. So we're anticipating another $261,000 this year to continue with the initiatives that we've started with, with the grant under technology integration, well-rounded students, and safe and healthy.
Well, I just want to thank you and the staff for chasing these grants and being aggressive, making sure that we bring all the dollars that we can into our school system. And I think it's a really important thing to point out that we've got people in our administration who are working really hard to find grants to help our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, could we just share what family engagement specialists do? I think that is such a critical role for our children and parents.
Every year, I usually present to you all about how many families we've seen. So I'm probably going to start becoming like McDonald's used to be billion served. But every year, we have like 26,000 to 30,000 families that we're able to reach, either through home visits, school-based visits, community visits, community experiences, or the quarterly experiences like you attended at DSA this year, where every level of that building was full of interactive things to do. And it was just a great day. So we have those. We have the, next event is at CNU coming up. We're partnering with them with their STEM Family Day. So that's one of the things they do. But the, making the connection of informing, engaging, and empowering parents, that's really their goal every time they go out. And I think it's important to know that eight people do this work. So eight people are making that big of a difference with reaching families. And it's that they're not, they're not fearful of going anywhere, and they're willing to meet parents where they are. So I think they do a tremendous job, and we're happy to be able to support them with the funds.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Remner, did you have a hand up?
Oh, no.
Okay. Mr. Brown, did you have a hand up? Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Next, we have item number four point oh three, five point oh three, new and revised policies and procedures. And Ms. Brooke will take us through that report as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Nichols. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share with you five new and revised policies and procedures. As you know, one of the major roles of the school board is to set the policy direction for the school division. So we're very fortunate to have two board members serving on the policy committee each year. And this year, we have Mr. Stodgill and Mr. Brown, who give us a lot of input and, you know, valuable assistance during the policy process. We also have on the committee three principals, one from each level, a teacher representative, our legal counsel, and then myself as a policy administrator. And as part of the policy review process, which includes our senior staff to get their input, our department leads, we also have a public comment period. So any comments or suggestions that we get during that time, we incorporate into the policy drafts that are before you this evening. So this evening, I would like to review changes to three policies and procedures that are due as a result of new state and federal guidelines. And the first two revisions are required by the state code and therefore are policies and procedures regarding student attendance and home instruction. The third policy that is being revised is to meet new federal guidelines. And we are revising our meal charges policy, which addresses unpaid balances on our students' meal accounts. We're also recommending two new policies and procedures. The first is on how to respond to legal orders when they're served, such as lawsuits and subpoenas. And also a new policy that will allow school board members to participate in meetings electronically. Our first revision that I'd like to share with you this evening is regarding our attendance procedures. The state's new standards for accreditation will be changing beginning with next school year. And part of that change is with student attendance. In the past, the Virginia Department of Education based absenteeism on the number of students unexcused absences. But beginning next year, excused absences will be counted as well. So we're revising our attendance policy to reflect that change. So starting next school year, we will be required to submit to the state the number of students missing 10% of their school days, including both excused and unexcused absences, which is considered excessive absenteeism. So the higher the number of students in this category, the greater the impact will be on our school accreditation. And the state is currently working through that process. So for our school division, which has 180 days, that would be 18 days that a student would miss to be in that category. And lastly, for students with repeated unexcused absences, and that is five or more, we're updating our procedures on how we notify parents when their students are absent. And also about the interventions that we will have in place to respond or to help students in terms of that reducing those numbers of absences. And those practices range from sending an automated call home to parents, to scheduling a parent conference, to also working out an attendance plan. And you've heard about our ABC plans, attendance, behavior, and coursework. And so the attendance plan is also part of that. Our next policy is our homeschooling policy and procedure. We were just renaming that to be home instruction to reflect the state terminology. But we're also revising the procedure to incorporate two state-required changes. The first is just to add our college placement test information to that policy. And that's the test dates and registration information. And that's for the tests you see before you, ranging from SAT to our advanced placement tasks. And secondly, we've added the exceptions for showing proof of immunizations. So parents who want to request an exception must submit an affidavit stating that the immunization conflicts with their religious beliefs or provide a doctor's statement indicating that the required immunizations are detrimental to their child's health. And our last revision is to our meal charges policy and procedures. The National School Lunch Program and our school breakfast programs are requiring participating school divisions to have a policy to address meal charges for students who are eligible for reduced-price or full-price meals but do not have the money on hand at the time that the meal is served or money in their accounts to cover the cost of their meals. So while we currently have a policy addressing unpaid meal account balances, we've added the new federal requirement to communicate the meal charge policy with our parents annually. And we'll do that at the beginning of the school year and the information that goes home with our students, as well as to post it online. Now, the school division is also required to have procedures for collecting unpaid meal balances from families. So these procedures will incorporate the guidelines that we've actually had in place for the past year. And it's somewhat of a three-tier process of notifying our families. And that will range from reminding students of their account balance to notifying parents through automatic phone calls. But the policy also states that at no time will a tray ever be taken away from a child. But there is good news, because the number of students with meal account balances has been decreasing over the years. And given that our school division, that almost three-fourths of our schools provide breakfast and lunch to all students in the school at no cost to families through our federal community eligibility provision program. And we're also working next year to apply to include more schools in that program. So that's reduced those meal account balances tremendously. So as I said, that's nearly three-fourths of our schools. So this concludes the policy and the procedures that we are recommending to revise. And I'd like to share two new policies and procedures that we are proposing for you this evening, starting first with the response to service of legal orders. So this new procedure provides details about how to respond when lawsuits are served or subpoenas are issued, such as witness subpoenas or subpoenas for employment records or for our students' educational records. Only school board members, the city attorney, or designee, our school board clerk, our superintendent, and the director of legal services may accept lawsuits, lawsuit papers for school division business. Any other employee whom the process server serves to, serves, seeks to serve, should direct the server to the person in one of these positions that I just mentioned. And when any of these persons are served with a lawsuit, they should immediately write down the date and time that they were served, actually provide their signature on the document, and then direct it to our director of legal services promptly so that the appropriate action can be taken. And that can range from contacting our insurance carriers to seeking out appropriate legal counsel. And in addition to our lawsuit information, the procedures really address issues regarding witness subpoenas as well. So those should be directed to our director of legal services. And subpoenas for student records should go to our records manager for the school division. And subpoenas for employment records should be directed to our director of human resources. Our last policy this evening is the electronic participation of school board members in meetings. So the state code allows school boards to meet by electronic communication without a quorum physically located, physically assembled in one location when the governor has declared a state of emergency and when the purpose of that meeting is to address that state of emergency. So to conduct a meeting in this manner, the board must give public notice of the electronic meeting using the best method available. Because if it is an emergency, that will affect, of course, our communication tools. And we're required to then provide minutes of those meetings to the Virginia Freedom of Information Advisory Council by December 15th. So in terms of next steps, we will come before you. And these policies, the new revised policies, will come before you for approval at your next meeting, June 5th. And then, once approved, we will post the new and revised policies and procedures online and send them to our schools and to our public libraries. So this concludes- So, this concludes my report this evening. Joining me are experts in our area, um, Ms. Kathy Alexander over Child Nutrition Services, Jay Moreland, who worked with us on home instruction and attendance, and of course, our legal counsel, Lynn Spratley, and Mr. Wallen. So, I thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you, and we'll be happy to address your questions.
Are there any questions? Uh, Ms. Brown?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Uh, thank you. I, I think there's a lot of great, great work that's been done this year. See some, uh, some very positive changes, um, in the policies that are being implemented. For example, the, the, uh, policy on immunizations should definitely help with outbreaks that have occurred in other communities. And, uh, just what I thought I'd share, uh, because I'm on the committee with the board, some of the policies that, uh, I, uh, or aspects of the policies I didn't like as much and some of the reasons why. For the meal charges, one, I do see in paragraph three of the procedures that after two meals, the alternate meal is provided. So, uh, just in sharing that, uh, not a fan of the alternate meal, but, uh, in, in terms of corresponding with the tier three, uh, it does comment on, on tier three about the procedure of, once the balance gets over thirty, to do the alternate meal. So, I think if the, uh, one thing would be, uh, between that paragraph three about the two meals versus the thirty dollars, to, um, get those in, in correspondence with each other, that that would probably, um, be, that would probably be helpful to the, to the policy. Uh, and then the second, the second one was just around the electronic participation, uh, policy. I- in, in the interest of open government and transparency, uh, I think electro- the electronic, uh, meeting is probably not the, the best idea in terms of, in terms of that, uh, in terms of being open and transparent to the citizens, uh, and that physical meetings are, uh, in my opinion, necessary and beneficial to, um, to having a free and open government. Uh, and then just, and then just as well, there's, uh, in looking at the adoption of that, there's, I don't see any circumstances or rea- or reason where, um, under a state of emergency, the school board would meet. Uh, if there's a, if there's an emergency, then, uh, you all won't hear from me. Uh, so, so those are just some of my, uh, the things that I've shared and some of my reasons, uh, for, um, not, uh, being in favor of those, aspects of those. But I think that all the other policies are, are really some great work that's been done and some real improvements to our procedures. Anyone else?
Just want to share with, uh, Ms. Brooks in reference to the, um, the meal plan. First of all, I'm going to applaud, um, Child Nutrition for all the work that they've done as far as applying for, for monies in reference to, uh, more free and reduced lunch students being served. And then, secondly, one thing I really, really want to highlight and admire, um, which was said in your report and also said in my one-on-one with the superintendent, with the acting superintendent, that no child should ever have a, a plate taken away from them.
And we do specify that.
Couldn't stress and emphasize that more, but that should never, ever happen to a child. And I applaud our school system for going ahead and making sure that that never happens. So, hats off to the Child Nutrition Department. Just thank you so very much for looking at that and, and thinking with not so much, um, money and everything, but thinking with your heart. And I thank you so very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Ms. Brooks, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll continue on the agenda, uh, five point oh four. We have a membership report, uh, the attendance report, the construction report are all part of your package. Are there any questions from those reports? There being none, I will move on to item five point oh seven, comments from the acting superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Good evening. I have some great news to share. We started with some wonderful news, uh, with our recognition tonight, but there's no shortage of amazing things. Uh, two of our high schools have been named among the best high schools in the nation by U.S. News and World Report. This is an Achievable Dream night. They started with the invocation and the pledge, and they are also going to Iowa for world championships. Achievable Dream High School is ranked thirty-fourth in Virginia and earned a silver medal in the national ranking. Not to be outdone, uh, but a few places behind the dream is, uh, Warwick High School is ranked forty-fourth in Virginia and earned a silver medal in the national ranking. So, that's huge. On this side of the Water and Hampton Roads, we do have the most, but who's counting? I am. The U.S. News ranking includes data on more than twenty thousand public schools. Uh, so, thank, we have the two of the top. Uh, schools are awarded gold, silver, or bronze medals based on their performance on state assessments, and more importantly, how well they prepare kids for college. Another exciting news, thanks to a great partnership with Donors Choose. Uh, last weekend on our Teacher Appreciation Week, we were able to give away eighteen mini-grants worth five thousand dollars to some of the most amazing teachers we have in the school division. It was a lot of fun. We had a prize patrol. We had big checks, and who doesn't love big checks? Um, it occurred over three days. Grants were awarded to the top projects that enhance equity and learning in our school division. So, we had elementary projects, we had pre-K projects, middle school projects, high school projects, you name it, we had it. This opportunity was provided by Donors Choose, which gave us that five thousand dollars in honor of us winning the two thousand eighteen National School Board Association Magna Award for our English as a Second Language program. So, it was a beautiful partnership there. Speaking of families and communities, we have two exciting events that, um, our families are invited to attend. Uh, the first is our third and final Family Resource, Family Forum and Resource Fair. We tried this out this year. After next Saturday, we'll have over a thousand people who have attended those three events. So, it's been a lot of fun. Speaking of family engagement, we couldn't do it without them. They make it happen with our community. This one is, um, Saturday, May nineteenth, at the Peninsula Boys and Girls Club. That's on Thorn Cliff Drive in Demby, from noon to two P M. Uh, families and community members may join us for lunch, Chick-fil-A, um, information booths, activities, entertainment, um, and a Q and A discussion with me. How fun is that? Also, as part of the Resource Fair, we do with, um, partners in the food bank and other organizations, we do free groceries, clothing, school supplies, backpacks, um, and many other things given away to our community. So, it's a great few hours of learning more about our school system and the hopes and dreams of our community, and also, uh, giving back and providing resources. So, we hope we see you there on Saturday, twelve to two, Peninsula Boys and Girls Club in Demby. I also want to invite you to it, Mr. Hubbard alluded to it. Saturday, June second, from ten A M. to two P M., uh, is STEM Community Day. And you can't do STEM Community without Newport News Public Schools. Uh, this is at the Freeman Center at Christopher Newport University, so right next door. Families can enjoy engaging hands-on activities, robotics, and STEM demonstrations. There are student displays and competitions. Uh, I believe every single one of our schools will be represented and have booths there. So, STEM is not just for a STEM magnet, it is everywhere in Newport News, pre-K twelve. Very proud of that. Attendances can also explore STEM educational opportunities and professions. We want to have that career thread through it. This event is sponsored by Newport News in co- in cooperation with our great partner, Christopher Newport. Not that you need this reminder, but I want to take the opportunity to remind you that Monday, May twenty-eighth, is Memorial Day, and that schools and offices will be closed. Like I said, you probably don't need that reminder, but I wanted to give it to you tonight. Uh, so, I want to thank you, uh, for this evening. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move the agenda, item number six. Are there any cards?
I have no more cards.
There being none, we'll move on to, uh, matters by the school board. And first up, we have Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to start out by saying thank you to our presenters, Ms. Swett, Mr. Hubbard, and Mrs. Brooks. I enjoyed all of your presentations. I would like to reiterate something that I know that I've said before. It's really interesting for me to get a behind-the-scenes look at some of the things that really shape my life daily as a student. And that's part of what really struck me today, especially in regards to the presentation about the textbooks. Maybe to everyone here, like, that, that was a pretty brief presentation, you know, and you see, oh, of course, we're, we have good textbooks, like, that's, that's a given. Our students should have good textbooks. But that textbook, every one of those textbooks, s- so many students are going to be using that every single night doing homework based off that textbook. It just, it, I'm very glad to see how much thought and care is put into their selection, because it really is, it's a huge part of the classroom learning and the classroom experience. Uh, so, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for your presentations, especially Ms. Swett, um, for all her work. And then, uh, moving on to sort of the student life portion of my comments, I would like to let you guys, update you guys on some of the stuff that's been going on for our students. Uh, these past, this past week and then this week, uh, were two big weeks. It was A P exams, uh, so that was a very, very challenging, uh, experience for many of our students. Quite a few students are enrolled in A P classes, and A P tests are some of the most difficult. I'm, from my experience, I've never taken an I B exam, and I've heard that those are very difficult. But from my experience, some of the most difficult tests that high school students ever have the opportunity to take, and they're extremely challenging, and a lot of work goes into those classes. So, uh, good luck to all the students who have, who are taking A P exams for the rest of this week, and good luck to the students who already took them. Hopefully, it went well. Uh, we'll get our scores back in July. Uh, another thing that's coming up pretty soon here, well, for me, it's coming up. A lot of the high schools have already had this. Uh, but prom, it is prom season, so that is something that a lot of our high schoolers have been preparing for. Unfortunately, it is supposed to thunderstorm on Friday, so if you see a bunch of high schoolers looking very angry and zedful, that's probably why. Uh, but on the bright side, graduation is coming up. For me, it's June tenth. Uh, for a lot of other high schoolers, uh, in the region, it is around that time. I'm not, I think it's those two weekends, if I'm correct, yeah. So, that's coming up as well, on the brighter side of things. Uh, for, speaking from a senior's perspective, it's a very emotional time, but definitely one that is full of, you know, optimism and excitement for the future. So, that's another sort of thing that is dominating our lives right now. And finally, S O L season. It is S O L season pretty much all month. Uh, that is something that, uh, extends to all of our high school, or all of our high school students, not just the seniors. I know I've talked a lot about seniors, but it's kind of a big time for us. But they're definitely, everyone is taking S O Ls right now, so if you see a high schooler, wish them luck. Uh, those, I think, go big and sort of into our accreditation and are very important to our schools and our teachers, so hopefully those go well. And one more thing, uh, before I finish up, that our students have been very actively involved in. Uh, there was a massive, almost unprecedented amount of participation recently that I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge in, uh, a demonstration of support for our acting superintendent, Mr. Nichols. Uh, I have seen firsthand how powerful social media can be, especially for students in sort of, um, social movements. And this was an example of that. There were a couple of student leaders in our, um, school system who took the initiative, took to social media to garner student support. And I personally, as someone who's used social media to garner support amongst students and to unite students, I have never seen this level of participation from Newport News Public School students. So, it was truly incredible to witness just this unified front that students showed. It's something that I think had a big influence, uh, on a lot of our students, and hopefully will encourage students in the future to speak up about things that they care about, because it really was just a, especially for, for high school students, to be that involved and to be that unified was, uh, impressive for our students to manage to show such a united front on something and, um, to actively get involved. I mean, that's really what this was about, was just, uh, everyone got involved in this, and hopefully it will encourage future students to do the same, um, things that they care about. So, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stodgill?
Um, I don't have any comments tonight.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Brown?
All right, uh, a few comments. Uh, one, in mentioning the A P exams, uh, so very much looking forward to congratulating all of our A P scholars. Uh, so, uh, good luck on the exams, and we hope to finish up strong. We want to be congratulating you in a couple of weeks, hopefully, on, uh, those awards. And as mentioned as well, S O Ls, uh, finish the year strong. Uh, we want to see, uh, all the hard work that you've done come to fruition, uh, in great performances. So, I encourage all the students to just keep, um, keep at it and keep focused, uh, for the next couple of weeks, uh, as we close out the year. Couple of great events that have occurred and will be occurring. Uh, we had our Teacher of the Year, um, uh, banquet, which is always a, just a, a really exciting and fantastic event, had a, uh, chance to, uh, participate in that. And congratulations to Chief Master Sergeant Chris Rumbali, uh, for mentioning for being, uh, awarded as our Teacher of the Year. And it just hats off to the, as well to the committee. We see a lot of diversity, uh, in our Teachers of the Year, uh, in terms of subject areas and, uh, in different disciplines, so it's really, uh, very encouraging to, to see, um, that each year, and, uh, that was a great event. Coming up, uh, the, I'll be at, um, May twenty-first, I'll be at the, uh, Demby Kwanis fundraiser. Uh, if you want to join me over at the IHOP, uh, in the Demby area, we'll be, uh, helping to raise money for the, uh, Demby Kwanis Club, that, uh, helps to do, uh, good things for our youth in the, in the community. Uh, as well, uh, coming up, June fourteenth, we have the Books on Bikes, uh, uh, event, and hope that, uh, folks join me at the Demby Community Center for, uh, that. That promotes, uh, summer reading, uh, in the summer for, for our youth. Uh, and then as well, of course, uh, we have, uh, graduation, uh, coming up as well, so I'm very much looking forward to graduation, one of the, the funnest times of, of the year for myself. Uh, this last weekend, I had the chance to go to the two hundred-plus, uh, Scholars' Prefix, and so, I'll brag on, I was very, uh, happy I was, got this chance. Been waiting for a long time to see my own son, uh, go through and, uh, go across the stage and get his medal. He was very proud of that. And, uh, I'm very proud of all the students across Hampton Roads who participated in that event on an annual basis. It's, uh, twenty-one years. This was the twenty-first year of that event. Uh, and Newport News, we, as, as we've done every year, we showed out strong. Ninety-six, uh, young African-American males with three-point-oh or above graduating with those G P As. So, that's, uh, just, um, fantastic, uh, performance and, and great to, always very encouraging, great to see, and as well, great to seeing, great to see all the scholarships that the young men receive, uh, and all the schools that they, that they're attending. So, uh, the future is very bright for, uh, Hampton Roads as you, uh, look out at all the scholars that, uh, that are going to be walking across the stage in a month and all the scholars that have, uh, um, are passing through our doors each, each day. So, uh, looking forward to a, a great, uh, summer, and, uh, Ms. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Ms. Simons?
I also attended the two hundred-plus men breakfast, um, with Mr. Brown. And I have to say, when I first went, like, four or five years ago, then, the kind of scholarships they were getting, it was like a thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars. But this year, it was impressive. They were getting like twenty thousand dollar scholarships and like really, really good financial aid, so I was happy to see that. Uh, I am the Chair of New Horizons Career and Technical Center Board, and we were delighted to have our first-ever signing day. We have a new technical careers academy, and we had over forty students complete, um, degrees, well, certifications in areas like H VAC and automotive. And, um, they got hired right out of high school into Lee Pear and Newport News Shipbuilding, into like really good jobs, eighteen dollars an hour, full benefits. And, um, we, we did it kind of like a signing ceremony, like you would, you would have athletes do, where they got the, they got the hat from the, the different companies. So, um, you know, I just want the citizens to know that, um, you know, sometimes career and tech isn't as visible as it used to be. You know, you don't walk down the hall and see the shop class like you might have, but we're still doing it. We're doing it regionally. It's gotten very sophisticated, because we have the, the H VAC program and, and the electrical program, lots of sophisticated machinery and equipment over there, um, at New Horizons. So, we, we are doing the work, and we're hoping to expand this, um, Technical Careers Academy so that we can serve even more students and get them right into careers. So, that's my good news.
One second, Ms. Simons. Uh, next we have, um, Mr. Eley.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out to my account, um, third annual Account Youth Pep Rally at Doris, Doris Miller. Uh, we had about two hundred youth come out. It was very great. They was able to express their needs and want in the community, as well as participate in, uh, fun activities to get them ready for college. I also like to, um, thank all the teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just, my heads go off to all that you do. You work night and day, um, before school, after school, Saturday school. That job never stops, so I really congratulate you and appreciate all the hard work you do, um, not just teachers, administrators, senior staff. It's a, it's a, it's a hard job, very hard job, so I really thank y'all from the bottom of my heart. Also, want to have, tell the teachers and administrators and students to stay encouraged with the S O L testing going on this month. We're going to continue to do great, great things are happening in Newport News, and just do the best you could do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eley. Uh, Mr. Harris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the Achievable Dreams and Warwick High Schools for their great accomplishment. Not just the high school itself, but also the administrators, principals, teachers, counselors, parents, and most of all, our students, uh, for this great accomplishment. I also like to, uh, publicly thank my two peers that would, you know, that would be leaving, uh, Mr. Carlton Ashby, uh, for a lot of great years of service.
We have him on my meeting now.
I know, I know. But just in case I'm not here.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Carlton Ashby, for a lot of great years of his, uh, service. I've learned a lot, uh, uh, from him. Probably I'm pronounced to you, but I have, uh, not just by what you say, but also by what you do with deeds, okay? And also, Mr. Jeff Stodgill, uh, I'd like to thank you publicly, also for your, your service and, and, and quiet, steady, uh, leadership. Learned a lot from you as well. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, you heard tonight, there was great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. Again, oh, I'm sorry. Um, our vice chair, uh, Mr. Ashby.
Could it not be brief, but I just want to echo, I think one of the things I want to echo is what Ms. Ely said in reference to Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think I would connect it to what I shared with Kathy Alexander's group, and I once heard Dr. Rashid say, in reference to anything that we do with children, that is, it is not hard work, it's heart work. And Maya Angelou says, you can only be great at something that you love, and our teachers, you know, I call them educarers, have a lot of love for our children, and that's why our children are just simply so successful, because of love and devotion and dedication. So Teacher Appreciation Week should really be every single week of the year, because they give a hundred and ten percent all, all the time. I think, and want to acknowledge all the speakers, the presenters that shared tonight, just great, great, outstanding information, and we know the dedication, devotion that goes into our children, you've heard me say it over and over again, we are investing in our greatest resource, our greatest resource are our children. So whether it's academics, whether it is staff development, whether it is feeding our children, that is eclectically and holistically what Newport News Public Schools does. To Reverend James, I want to, I love that concept, it is better to educate than to incarcerate, and it's, and that is really a profound statement, because it's about being proactive, and whether with this school board or the Smart Beginnings Board, which I serve on, you know, research is clearly telling us that we must invest in education. It's not about investing the opposite side of, of being reactive, it's being preactive and proactive in reference to our children. So to educate our children instead of to incarcerate them is key and critical. And then, lastly, Newport News Public Schools, and you've heard the acting superintendent share about STEM Day, well, I've been very fortunate to bring my young achievers to every single STEM Day that we've had. It is a phenomenal, phenomenal experience. Sixty to sixty-five percent of the most highest-paying careers are going to be STEM-related. So again, Newport News Public Schools has been preactive and proactive, just eclectically looking at the STEM concept, building a Discovery STEM Academy, and really looking at serving the needs of our children, and that has happened. So I too would encourage the public to please, please come out June second, from ten o'clock to two o'clock, at Christopher Newport University, and be involved in the STEM Day, see all the wonderful careers and all the wonderful things that Newport News Public Schools is doing. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Chairman.
Oh, you're welcome.
Nice chair. There are great things happening in Newport News Public School tonight. Again, a special thanks to our Odyssey of the Mind winners, those three schools, that's outstanding, as they prepared themselves to compete against the world competition, that's outstanding. And then, again, to Ms. Parchelle for her award, Association of the Being Administrator of the Year award, another phenomenal feat as well. Again, I want to say good luck to all the students again, who are teaching, taking the SOLs. I do have a spouse who's in the education field, so I fill that around my house as well when it's SOL time. So I understand what the students are doing. I, I failed to mention, I think, our last meeting, we have a soundscapes, students were invited to go to play up into the Kennedy Center, I think, last month. I hit that on my list and I was remiss, and so I wanted to make sure that I didn't, to give them a little plug-in, that they went up there and, another great program here in this particular city, where kids learn, learning through instruments and things of the sort, as you heard, as our, Mr. Ely always would say, that music, those who play music typically excel, our teach, our students who are musically inclined, they actually, and Mr. Brown has a son who has done just that. Again, again, I did see that on newspaper and as well as in the news, for our New Horizons students who graduated, this is what we're talking about, our Huntington, New Huntington Middle School, those are types of, this is a blue-collar city. I don't want, this is a blue-collar city. Our largest employers, you know, it's the shipyard, and Cannon, and Lee Pear, and so a lot of our kids will not go to a four-year university. They will go and get that certification and then move directly into working. The New Huntington Middle School, we could have modeling and simulation there that correlates with the heritage, I mean, with the New Horizon schools, and really, those are types of jobs that are here for our students right here. So Reverend James Brown and Ms. Basebore, I hear you. I hear you. I hear you. The Huntington is number one on our list, and I'm going to be on the board, and I'm going to be sure that we continue that, if you come to our meetings every week, we will assure you that that will be placed first. Mr. Bryan here, Mr. Nichols, him and I have spoken with him many a times. I tell you the truth, I heard Ms. Uganda, I heard her sample back there, thank you again for your presentation. I heard her, this is the second time I've heard from her today at the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority, and congratulations on you for your presentations that you did for that. And that actually, oh, yeah, both of you, yes, yes, yeah, hell, both of you were there today. But here's the great thing about the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, it actually ties directly into the school system. And so, Mr. Nichols has done a phenomenal job putting the package, him and his team, putting that package together for our school system. And so, I do believe this latest couple of months, that those who have, citizens who felt like a ping-pong ball or tennis ball, what this thing has done is really, I think, made the city more aware, and it's going to make us, this school board and the city council, to be a more cohesive team. I think that's what we, we're in. I heard it today at this other board that I was on, Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority, I heard of that from the presenters, I felt it from the presenters, I see the passion on our teachers for the raises, I saw the superintendent, our acting superintendent come forward, he's been now talking. I actually saw our city council actually listen, and that even though it may not have been the most perfect plan, but we set out to do one thing at this particular time, and that's to make sure that everyone get that four percent raise, we will have to work on how we can restructure for the following year in order to continue those four, three, four, and maybe five percent raises, and that we won't have to have ping-pong citizens who go up and down the highway. So that being said, well, we are on the right track, and I look forward to an ending year on a positive note, and we look forward to a next year. That being said, I believe we need to go into a closed meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. To convene a closed meeting in accordance with the Code of Virginia, section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A subsection one, for the purpose of discussing the employment contract for a specific public officer.
You heard the motion as a second.
Second.
You heard the motion as a second. Now for the question. There being none, Mr. completes, call the robe.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Excuse me, Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
And Mr. Ely.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
We will recess this meeting until, until we come out of our closed session.